And I will ask Mrs. Overby if she will check attendance.
Mr. Alker?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. First order of business tonight will be approval of the evening's agenda. Does, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as it has been communicated to us earlier?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. Take this opportunity to welcome guests tonight. It's nice to see some young people who I hope are going to recognize later on in the meeting, and the parents. We appreciate you people being with us on this kind of dreary night. I don't know how many of you fought your way through the rain, but we're glad you're here. We appreciate you coming. Also, we appreciate members of the staff being with us for tonight's meeting. At this time, I will ask Mr. Alker if he will lead us in the invocation, and Mr. Zayer will lead us in the pledge following that.
Let us pray. Oh God, our heavenly Father, we ask you that as we come here to be about the business of the school system, Father, we pray that you would give us wisdom and strength. Give us clear minds and open hearts. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on our agenda is public comment. I believe that we have had no one sign up for public comment tonight, so we will move on to item three, awards and recognition. Mrs. Hatch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am pleased this evening to share with you the accomplishments of some very important young ladies. So I'm going to ask Mr. Chairman and our acting superintendent if you all will come down and have your photo made with them, and I'll call their names. We have several young ladies who were recognized as members of the first and second team P-5 district softball. First team, Lindsey Newman and Soraya Scales. And we're going to ask you ladies to stay so we can take a group picture. And second team district softball members, Kelly Smith, Emily Ray, Allison Wagner, Ally Burnett, and Mallory Ray. And they will become familiar faces as we go through this list. We also have a member of our first team region 3D softball, and that is Soraya Scales. And Soraya, I'm going to ask you to stay for another group picture. Additionally, some of her teammates earned second team region softball honors, and they were Kelly Smith, Mallory Ray, and Lindsey Newman. Yes, sir. And then finally, for another softball honor, and this is a big one, second team state softball And our last recognition for this evening is a very important national award. Earlier in the year, Madeline Oliver, a student at Bassett High School, earned the National Beta Convention Creative Writing Award, so we'd like to recognize her tonight. I'm going to let her tell that. Nothing like being put on the spot.
Everyone was given a prompt, and since the convention was held in Savannah, Georgia, which is considered to be one of the most haunted cities in the country, the prompt was to write about a night spent in haunted Savannah. So the take that I took on it was throughout the story, this woman believes that her house is haunted and goes out to investigate, but through clues given in the story and as revealed in the end of the story, it turns out that she's actually the ghost, and the people that are in her house are people on a ghost tour.
Did you get paid those four while you were in Savannah?
That's very grand.
We're heading to Savannah next month, so I'm not sure. Seriously, I didn't know that, really.
Congratulations to all of these young ladies, and I think they have represented certainly our two high schools well, and we appreciate them being here. And parents, you also deserve congratulations for what they have accomplished, I think. So let's give all of them one last hand. Okay, item number four under our agenda for tonight, information agenda is blank. That means that we don't need any information, right?
Not right at this moment.
At this moment, we do not.
We'll have lots next month when we start.
Make up for it next month, okay?
That's right. We will.
Item five, the evening's consent agenda consists of four different items. All board members have received this in advance and had the opportunity to examine these. Is there any one of the four that anyone would like to call forward for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's been presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. We'll move to item six, the action agenda, and I believe Ms. Landon has the first item there.
Good evening. At the June 3, 2004 regular meeting of the School Board of Henry County, the Board approved the establishment of a sick leave bank for full-time licensed employees. It also approved seven positions from which individuals would be recommended as sick leave bank advisory board members. The School Board will appoint the advisory board members with the exception of the Henry County Education Association representative, and the HCEA will appoint their own. It will be the responsibility of the advisory board to make recommendations regarding levels of the bank and to approve requests for the use of bank by participating members. The six individuals who are being recommended for board approval for the sick leave bank advisory board for the 2018-2019 school year are the central office representative, Mrs. Lisa Milner, elementary teacher representative, Ms. Sherrell Hodge, middle school teacher, Mr. Brian Stowe, elementary principal, Mrs. Judy Edmonds, secondary principal, Mr. Charles Byrd, and superintendent's designee, Mr. David Scott. It is recommended that the School Board approve names submitted for the sick leave bank advisory board for the 2018-19 school year.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the recommended list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this list. This is a function that's been in place for some time now, and I think we all understand how it works and why it works, and so we have a motion and a second.
I'd like to make one more comment. This started before my tenure on the School Board. I think it's excellent in the fact that I donated a couple days myself, and it helps people who have catastrophic illnesses. Could you give us an example of how much this has been utilized in the last few years? Do you have any idea?
It varies. There have been a couple of years since I've been here that it's not been utilized at all, and then for the last few years, we've generally averaged around two to three requests per year.
Does it, does it carry over from year to year, or it starts anew each year for those days that have been donated?
Employees are only required to donate two days upfront, and we've had a fairly sizable number of days, and since it has not been utilized heavily, you know, those have just carried over. We've not had to assess additional days, at least in the past five years that I've worked here.
Good. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Those in support of this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Landon.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrison has the next item under this, what do I say, Ms.? Why do, pardon me, I know that you are not Ms. Harrison.
Yes, sir.
Old habits are hard to change.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am asking for the approval of a contract with the University of Virginia for a graduate-level word study course for our teachers. Word study for the classroom is a course offered for 14 weeks and will present the stages of literacy development in terms of spelling, reading, and writing. The participants will learn how to assess students' spelling development, determine groups for instruction, and to design instruction for each spelling stage. This was a request of our teachers, and it will be taught by our very own Dr. Sherry Lewis. It will cost approximately $1,155 per participant with a maximum of 40 participants. The estimated cost is $46,200, $23,100 per semester, and this is completely grant-funded by Title I.
Any questions regarding this issue, Ms. Milner?
What grade level are we focusing on in elementary?
Well, it is, it's open for all elementary teachers.
All elementary teachers.
It's completely voluntary.
Yes, completely voluntary.
That was my next question, how do we select the participants?
So we will send, we will send the information out, and then just go based on our respondents. So the ones who respond, the soonest will, you know, the quickest will get the first semester, and then the ones who respond after will get the second semester.
And we used to do this course in 2004. We started offering this course, and we actually had it as a requirement to recertify in 2004, '05, '06, and '07, and then about that time, all the teachers had went through the cycle and had this course, and so then we stopped offering the course, and due to experienced teachers, veteran teachers telling the new teachers about the course and how it helped them in the classroom, that's why the teachers have asked, can they please have this course again? And the Dr. Lewis has taught this course for UVA, for other divisions, and for us. So that's why it will be held here locally, and it's only if they want to take the course.
Will they be receiving credit for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions, concerns? We have a motion regarding this. Those in favor of this stated motion, signify by raising your right hand. No motion. We will accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Now we have a motion. Those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Item C, Ms. Milner.
Yes, sir. I am also seeking the approval of the purchase of consumable materials for Xanoblosor for all Title I elementary schools. Our K-5 teachers currently use the I Read to Write series, as well as grammar usage and mechanics resources from Xanoblosor, as instructional resources for teaching English language arts. And what they are requesting is for the students to receive the consumables that go with these resources, and there's a, the I Read to Write series includes two high-interest informational texts per unit, and this is related by content, content area and themes. Students read the articles closely, they cite the text evidence in response to questions in the margins, they check comprehension and analyze each text, then they synthesize information from multiple texts in a written response and one or more of the text types. And then we can focus also on the grammar usage and mechanics, in which they look at self-contained students and teachers additions full of key skill practice, high-interest topics, text, and extra activities that are easy to teach and designed to be taught in any order. The materials are designed to provide high-impact, self-guided instruction with clear, concise, two-page lessons that last about 15 minutes, and Xanoblosor is a sole source provider for the above materials. It is recommended that the School Board approve the purchase of the consumable instructional materials from Xanoblosor for all Title I elementary schools. The fiscal impact is $33,917.53, and again, this will come out of our Title I funds.
Again, questions regarding this request?
Mr. Chairman, move we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this. Hearing no further discussion, those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Item C, or D, I guess we are. Mr. Scott is going to be addressing us on a different topic than we usually hear.
That's correct. And I don't mind the change. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. First item of business is seeking the approval to order contract to purchase bag sealing equipment, supplies, and customer service for the school cafeterias. Henry County School Nutrition has been purchasing tape sealers, bag stands, and food-grade bags from Serve Pack Corporation from Hollywood, Florida since the 2014-15 school year. At that time, Serve Pack won the contract through a bid process. However, order fulfillment from Serve Pack has become an ongoing problem for the department, with some schools not receiving product for up to two months after orders were placed. We have found that their main competitor, Econopack, has a national contract with TIPS, which is the inter-local purchasing system, and that's under RFP number 17401, and that includes their heavy-duty bag sealers and stand supplies, regular visits to all the schools for the servicing of the bag sealers. The inter-local purchasing system awarded a three-year national contract to Econopack on June 22 of 2017 for the Econopack bag sealer system, supplies, and customer service under that same, the referenced, RFP. Since we are a member of the inter-local purchasing system, we'd like to recommend that we award the contract to them. And it is also recommended that Division B authorize to exercise subsequent renewals in accordance with the terms of the contract. This does have a fiscal impact of $63,400 to the cafeteria operating budget and other operating supplies, but it is recommended that we award the contract as stated.
Other questions regarding this?
Yeah, help me out.
Okay.
Tape sealers, what are we talking about?
I think when it comes to, when they're refrigerating food, after things have been brought into the cafeteria and so forth, I think this is for conserving the food that is already present.
Is it a machine?
Yes, sir. That there's a sealer that will make it safe for storage.
From reading the information, from reading the information and hearing your comments, the other, the company that was doing this before was not satisfactory.
Right, there was, Ms. Lexa expressed to me a large amount of dissatisfaction there, you know, saying that there were, it became billing complications when they would get invoiced, and there was such a delay in the product that they felt that they were really kind of behind the eight ball in a lot of these things.
How does this, how does their bid compare to what, the new bid compare to what the old company, is it more expensive, or do you even have that information?
I do, only kind of anecdotally, though. She said that it was a very competitive bid process, and I think that initially, back in 2014-15, Econopack had been in contention for the award initially, and then now since they have the national contract, it's easy for us to kind of jump to their ship.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So about the mere fact that we are, we, school system, we're part of Henry County, automatically, we can take advantage of TIPS bid.
Yes, because we're a member of TIPS.
Not go through any other program.
That's right. So we can, sort of through that, that TIPS program, we could take advantage of that
Mr. Chairman, this is for the cafeteria, so that makes it my part, so I'll go ahead. I move that we accept Mr. Scott's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments, questions? Not those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Scott, I believe you have the next item also.
Yes. This is for the approval to award bid number 18-07123-3043 to purchase equipment for Magnavista High School Cafeteria. The kitchen at Magnavista has a 35-year-old double-stack convention oven that has had maintenance issues over the past few years. Replacement parts are becoming obsolete. Replacement of the entire unit with a more efficient double-stack convention steam-injected oven from Blodgett model, from Blodgett model HV-100 is recommended. School Nutrition solicited bids, and four vendors submitted bids, one of which was withdrawn because the vendor submitted a bid for a single-stack oven instead of the double. The lowest bid came in at 5.2% lower than the bid from the next-lowest vendor. So it is recommended that the bid for the double-stack oven for Magnavista High School be awarded to Factory Direct Food Service, Inc. of Richmond, Virginia, for the amount of $2,000, I'm sorry, $21,644, and that would, that would reflect in the cafeteria operating budget.
Chairman, move we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second regarding this request. Any additional discussion?
I just wanted to ask, with us closing elementary school, I assume that we're taking advantage of equipment from one place and moving to the next. You get what I'm asking? In other words, if we're closing a school with more modern equipment than this 35-year-old, are we examining the opportunity of using some of that kind of equipment?
So where Collinsville Primary is going to become the Center for Community Learning, they will still operate a kitchen. So John Redd is our school that will have the kitchen that, I'm looking at Mr. Scott, because as we moved all these items this, this summer, John Redd's facility is older, equipment's older, but yes, anything that is still usable will be used, but if not, it will go to surplus. But most of that equipment's very old, and if you want to speak to anything specific.
Well, that's Craig. I did, did be a little bit of heads up on this, too. During the design of Metapure, Ms. Lexa sat down with the nutrition designer, the group that designed the whole kitchen, and looked at equipment that we already had in some of our schools and took that out of the original bid, because we knew we were going to be able to move it from John Redd or Collinsville Primary or do a little shift in around, so.
Thank you.
I assumed we'd done that, I just thought I should ask.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? This time, we do have a motion, I believe. Those in support of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Final item, approval of proposed 2020 budget development calendar and activities, Mr. Scott. I think that Ms. Atkins indicated we have some technical problems tonight. If you want to see that, you can click on the tab at the top of your screen, Budget Development, and it will appear, and it did, so you can now address it to us.
Okay. The proposed budget development calendar is being recommended to ensure the input of appropriate personnel and the community into the budget for the 2019-2020 school year, as well as meet the timeline set forth by Dakota, Virginia. And I will tell you that it is strikingly similar to last year's calendar. There is one change, though, that we, whereas last year, I think the School Board members were part of the final group to weigh in on the process, we are now kind of working on it and making sure that that is something that you guys have an opportunity to weigh in before the other state court groups. So it is recommended that the budget development calendar and associated activities be considered for approval.
I believe I recall that request from Mr. Alker at our last meeting, that School Board members be involved somewhat throughout the process instead of just at the end, and I appreciate that being incorporated into this, this new schedule. Any other questions or comments regarding this?
I know it's, I mean, this can be amended, and last year, we had to change a couple dates because of the bad weather at our drawing meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and that's, that's just minor, and this is just an overall.
There are a couple TBDs.
Yes, sir.
Dates in there, yes, sir.
Reverend Alker had a good idea there. I think maybe a couple of School Board members ought to be on the budget. We could appoint them later. Don't you think, Reverend Alker?
Yes.
Most definitely. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the budget timetable.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this calendar as presented, with the understanding that some board members will be involved and will be selected by the entire group. Those in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
I just wanted to add the comment, I, I've said about this in the past as well, because we've been referred to as stakeholders. We are not stakeholders. This is our budget. We are legally and technically and fully responsible for this budget, instead of, I mean, I agree that we need to be involved earlier in the process and have somebody on the committee, and obviously, staff are involved heavily in the technical components of developing the budget, but we're the ones responsible for it, so we're not stakeholders in the same way that a teacher cabinet or a student cabinet is, so.
Certainly, those comments are right on line. Okay, we'll move to Superintendent's report. Again, we don't have the projector for the screen. If you, and I hope I'm telling you correct, if you click on the little orange P down in the right-hand corner of your screen, you can call that, that presentation up, and we can see it individually on our screens.
You are correct, Dr. DeBol. I'll give everybody a moment to get to that PowerPoint.
All right. It doesn't do it. It doesn't come up.
Oh, go down. You should. This.
Yeah, that's one. Put that right on.
Okay.
There you go. Okay.
So this one's highlights, features some of the many things that occurred around the division preparing for the 2018-2019 school year. Our first slide, planning ahead. Social Studies teacher, social studies teacher spent time this summer working with curriculum coordinator Sue Towns on developing new curriculum for global geography and cultures, which will be taught in the eighth grade at both FC and Lowell Park this year. Cracking the code. As part of their summer preparation for coding in the classroom this fall, several staff members participated in the Code Virginia workshop at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research in Danville. Participants collaborated to plan for implementing code at all levels in Henry County schools this year. Pre-trip checklist. Our transportation team is working diligently to ensure efficient routes for all the buses on the first day of school. The team is excited to have new software in place to help support routing, as well as to have updated radios to support communication throughout the year. Tech this out. The technology team has been receiving and installing new devices across the division this summer, including active panels, computers, iPads, and technology accessories. Lots of boxes. Building a future. The new Career Academy of Henry County has quickly taken shape this summer. Henry County staff and contractors have been working around the clock to complete the additions and modifications. and modifications to house the agricultural, industrial maintenance, and cosmetology programs. We are looking forward to seeing students in these new spaces in the weeks to come. On the move. As you know, most of our manpower this summer was used for relocation of Collinsville Primary and John Red Smith to Metaview and the relocation of the Center for Community Learning to Collinsville Primary's location. Thanks to the hard work of our dedicated team, each location is unpacked and ready for the first day of class. Aesthetic upgrades. Renovation, renovating of the remaining six restrooms at Bassett High School was completed this summer. It's a brand-new look for these restrooms and we're excited for the students, staff, and community to see these spaces. This project was a combination of outside contractors and our facility maintenance department. The students are very proud of those restrooms. In pristine condition, the Service Solutions team spent the entire summer working on stripping and waxing all the classrooms, hallways, and common areas along with detailed cleaning of each building so the students and staff will start their school year with a clean Enrollment extravaganza. Throughout the summer, teams of staff members have worked closely with Daniel Rodriguez to host Power School Registration Help Sessions at Lowell Park Middle School. By offering bilingual assistance to families across the division, we have been able to reach more families than in the past and ensure that student information will be correct on the first day of school. Opening the doors. It was our great honor on Sunday, July 29th, to officially open Metaview Elementary to our community with a ribbon-cutting ceremony and community tours. The Wildcat staff and students are eager to begin the school year in their new space. And now, I would like to introduce you on Tuesday, July 24th, as Dr. Devault mentioned last week when we all met, that our new teachers all met at FC Middle School for New Teacher Orientation. And so you can see in our photos, our 17 elementary teachers. Next, you'll see our 12 middle school teachers. And finally, our 20 high school teachers. And I know you'll all join me in welcoming to the division and becoming part of the Henry County family. That is the end of the highlights report. Are there any other reports that you would like to discuss?
The other reports were in your agenda that you received earlier, receipts and expenditures, energy and facilities, fundraisers approved by the superintendent. Any questions, comments on any of those?
Well.
Yes, sir.
Not a report, but throughout your presentation in particular, I noticed we had all these active boards. I saw those. Are we, I mean, the process of teachers getting these active boards, are we still screening those or?
The process is different now. So Ms. Milner, you want to talk about the process because we have changed that, Mr. Gravely?
Yes, Mr. Gravely. Previously, you know, our teachers had to submit a grant to receive an active board. Now we have the expectations that they will be using those boards in the classrooms. So they are present in our elementary schools and our middle schools. They still have to submit in the, a request for the high schools, but we do have those available in our elementary and middle schools.
It's a lot different. I think, and what Mr. Gravely's referring to is a little bit difficult to get the technology in room. Now it's not difficult.
Well, we want them to have them and use them.
Right, we've been working on that the last six years.
We don't want it to be difficult for them to get them so they can use them for our kids.
Notice when we did the open house, as I was in several of the rooms, some of the guests, parents, community people were looking at those and saying, what are they and how are they used? And I couldn't explain it, so.
That's not, that's not an easy thing, is it?
But, but they were very interested and happy to see all of that technology in the new school.
We didn't have anything that looked like that years ago. Blackboards.
Blackboards, that's right. No more erasers to dust.
That's right.
Okay, any other questions from that section of our agenda? If not, are there matters from the board to be brought before the entire board and Mrs. Strayer tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I had the honor of attending our new business industrial announcement and I noticed Mrs. Strayer was there with Mr. David Scott, and Mr. Gravely was there and you were there, Mr. Chairman. It was a tremendous turnout. And ever since this announcement, I've been bombarded with people talking to me about they're welcoming our Career Academy and they're hoping that we can do more in the future. And I did talk to Mrs. Milner and Mr. Minter for the meeting and they told me they've been hearing the same thing. Electricians, plumbers, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're, we're off to a good start and I just hope that we will continue with that. Mrs. Strayer, have you been hearing that also?
Yes, sir. It's those skills, remember in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math that everyone's skipping, that we want to make sure that we teach those and our students that want to pursue that career are prepared to pursue that career.
That reminds me of one of the conferences that I attended in the last year or so. I believe that was when previous governor was in office, he was using some statistics that by the year 2025, maybe, or maybe 2020, that more than half of the jobs that will become available, like 70% of the jobs that will become available, will be made available through increased technology, will not require a four-year college, traditional four-year college degree, but will require several years of actual technical training that can take place in, beginning in high school and Career Academy. So I hope we will stay ahead of the, of the lines in terms of addressing it and being sure that, that our schools or that our young people have that advantage. Item nine, reminder of dates. I won't go through all of these. They're listed in your agenda. We'll remind everyone, I believe, on Monday, our convocation at Bassett High School.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Remember the parking problems there, so you have to get there kind of early or else walk a long way to get in. The conferences also are listed and just a reminder that if you plan to attend, please be sure that, you know, you make business owners be aware of that. Okay, at this time, we will, we will move to section 10 and I will entertain a motion to go into closed section for, closed session for section 2.2-3711, print A, print 1, Code of Virginia for discussion of consideration of appointments, transfers, reassignments, and separations of our employees. Section 2.2-3711, print A, print 2, Code of Virginia for discussion, consideration of special placement of non-resident applications and requests for release of compulsory attendance. And same section, print A, print 8, Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Those in favor, signal five, raise your right hand. We will go to closed session in the boardroom upstairs.